I'd like to call the Orange Board of Education meeting to order on Tuesday, March 15th, 2021 at 7:04. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible)
Dr. Cap, would you be kind enough to read the mission statement?
Good afternoon. The Orange Elementary School District recognizes that the education of each child is shared, is a shared responsibility of every member in the community. Our goal is to inspire and empower each student to achieve academic excellence, embrace social and individual responsibility, and lead with integrity. We believe all individuals should be valued and treated with respect. Together, we will make a difference.
Thank you. Public participation, do we have any public participation? Seeing none, we'll move on. Correspondence. We have a thank you note from the Hadlock family. Dear Board of Education and friends, thank you very much for the delicious fruit and cookies we enjoyed during our recent celebration. Kevin and I are still basking in the glow of love and affection from family and friends near and far. Feeling very blessed and very loved, thank you again for thinking of us. Fondly Betty and Kevin Hadlock. Again, congratulations, Betty. That's great.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. I would need a motion to accept the first item under the consent agenda. The first item is the minutes from the January 19th, 2021 Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Ken, second. Susan? Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Very well. I will need a motion to accept the second item under the consent agenda. The second item is the minutes from the first Board of Education budget workshop that took place on January 28th, 2021. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Susan, second. Betty? Any further discussion on this? Charles?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I had made a motion at this meeting. I don't see reflected at the meeting minutes. And with Mrs. Shaw's situation, I didn't want to burden her with it over the weekend, obviously. But I had made a motion, and it's not reflected here about...
All right, Charles, what was the motion?
I believe I had made a motion to add an additional FTE, which was not seconded and I believe failed at the 28th meeting.
Okay, I do recall that.
I know I put it in originally.
Do you want to take a peek, Susan? Take a moment?
I did. I did.
So I'm sure that in, somewhere in Mary's notes is the exact motion.
No, I wasn't there. I took those notes.
You took those notes?
Yeah, I'll add.
Okay.
If it can amend it.
All right, so let's amend. All right.
If it can amend it.
All right. So we will amend the motion to reflect your motion that was made that evening.
Yes.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, I will amend the notes from...
Can you turn on the microphone? Sorry. Yes, I will amend the minutes of that meeting, of the special board meeting, to add that Charles Flynn had made a motion to add two FTEs that did not get a second and did not pass. I will add that.
Very well. Is that satisfactory, Charles?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, so we all understand that it's an amended motion. So I have a motion from, I believe, Susan. Betty, you're good with your motion, correct? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Very good. And let's see, what is this? The minutes from the second Board of Ed budget workshop that took place on February 8th, 2021. Board of Education meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes. Ken, second? All right, we have two Kens. Ken Vitale and Ken, did you make a motion, Ken?
No, Ken Vitale.
Oh, do I have a second? Betty? Okay. Betty, I thought I saw Ken raise his hand. Any further discussion on these minutes? Go ahead, Charles.
Yes, similarly, I did not want to bother Mrs. Shaw, but I would, I'd hope to confirm with Attorney Young and Mrs. Rodriguez. I believe in the, in the minutes where it says the motion on the budget, the vote that I, or the motion that I introduced that failed, I believe Mr. Young wanted to be recorded as voting no, and I believe Ms. Rodriguez wanted to be recorded as voting yes. But obviously, I couldn't confirm that with them tonight, so I just wanted to note that for the record.
All right. You have that?
I have that on page three.
Did they, is that, did that make it into the minutes?
I can't confirm it, but I will.
All right, well, neither, neither one of them are here. All right, let's do this. Because we really can't confirm it. Let's table, let's table the motion. All right, so I'm, I need a motion to table the motion. Correct?
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Until it gets updated properly. All right. Ken made a motion. Do I have a second? Susan? Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? All right, and we'll get together with you after the meeting and get that straightened down, okay? All right, moving on. Dr. Scarpetti?
Mr. Crowe, with your permission, I'd like to start off with a moment of silence. As many of you know, Raymond Heaney, an Amity Middle School student, sadly passed away. He was a previous Racebrook student. And with your permission, the boards like to start off with a moment of silence in his memory.
Thank you. And I ask the board and everyone watching who knows the Heaney family, and even if they do not, if you could please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you, Mr. Crowe. So to begin with, this Friday, March 19th, school will be closed for Professional Development Day. In addition to the professional learning that will occur that day, which Dr. Russo will share in a moment, we want to take advantage and support our staff having a vaccine clinic on a day where, number one, there was no school, two, that it actually occurred in Orange, and intentionally planned it on that Friday, because if there happens to be any side effects, we know that the impact that that may have with our personnel. So we're hoping that, that that day will go off without a hitch. I also want to extend my thanks to Dr. Mohammed and his team at the Orange Health Department for coordinating this clinic, along with Mary Shaw and Matt Allering and his team. We are excited for our staff to be vaccinated, because it adds another layer of mitigating factors to ones we have already established. That said, it is important for us to continue with all our mitigating factors and kindly ask our families to do the same outside of school. As you are aware with the emails I've been sending you recently, there's been, you may call a surge of classes we've had to quarantine. We understand the weather's getting nice, and we all want to get back to normal as soon as we can, but if we could do that slow and steady, because it is, we're seeing having an impact in our schools lately. So we ask everyone to continue with the mitigating factors. Also, in January, I shared that the principal's position at Racebrook School was posted, and we have close to 40 applicants. At the end of this month, a survey will go out to staff and parents in order for them to be a part of the process and gather their input on the qualities they would like to see in our next principal. At this time, I'd like to extend a thank you to Sharon Wiersman. She was our interim principal, and we have a new interim principal named Elaine Watson. As many might know, there is a rule that TRB, TRB is the Teacher Retirement Board, that if you are retired administrator or teacher, you only can work 45% of the time. I appreciate the support that Mrs. Braw gave me and Personnel, along with Mr. Crowe. In the beginning of September, we actually tried to get a waiver or an executive order allowing for Sharon Wiersman to stay the whole entire year. Unfortunately, that met with, met unsuccessfully, but we were fortunate to have Elaine Watson finish this year, but look forward to continuing the process of the Racebrook School principal. Again, surveys will be going out at the end of this month. In addition to that, negotiations are about to begin with three bargaining groups. They include the custodians, administrative assistants and paraprofessionals, and central office. Soon I'll be sending out, to the negotiating committee, information that will come out in the near future. Last Monday, the Board of Ed budget was presented to the Board of Finance. That night before the actual presentation began and before we delved into the actual nine items, a question was posed regarding the success the school district had with the beginning of the year in person, five days a week, and that we're continuing to do so. I was asked if I could summarize of what I thought led to that success that we've had in our district. So I began to share my thoughts that evening. And again, I started off sharing with regards to having systems already set up. As you may be aware, you know, the talk was having a reopening planning committee, hiring consultants to come into districts, that was going around. And I went strictly with the foundations we've already set up with, already having PTOA council meetings set up monthly, our subcommittee meetings involving our teachers and our peer reunions and other discussions we've had. And I elaborated more, and I continued thanking the first selectmen, the Board of Finance, police, fire. But quite frankly, after I, that meeting, that was the one question that stayed on my mind, because coincidentally, last weekend, March 13th, marked a year where an email was sent to everyone that school was to close. It's hard to believe, because at that time, we didn't know what we didn't know. I think many of us thought that it was going to be two weeks, three weeks. We did not realize that we were going to be up for the rest of the year. But quickly, before beginning, our leadership team got together to create remote learning activities. And by any means, it wasn't perfect. We were working diligently, trying to meet the needs of our students. And I just want to take the liberty to share that now, because sometimes we're so immersed in our work, we take, we don't take a moment to reflect and say, wow, look what we've done, and look where we've come, and look what we're going to face. And so I want to share that with all of you, just in case you had not had a chance to see the Board of Finance meeting and anyone watching at home, the gratitude that we have for each other and for all of you that have made this system work in a very challenging time. We thank you for all of that. We continue to thank you for the support, and not knowing what may lead our way in the future, we know that we're going to do what we can, and we are operating from a moment of strength and courage instead of doubt because of the systems that we've created, but also the people that we rely on. So I want to thank you for all of that, and everyone at home for making this year as successful as we can. And in addition to that, to end, as chance has it, the month of March is Board Appreciation. And so there's a little token of our appreciation to all of you and all the work that you've done. As I reflected on that question that was posed to me, one of the things that also made us successful is the foundation that was started way before us knowing that there was a pandemic. For example, having most of our students have one-to-one devices. If we did not have that, we would be in a different situation than we are today and when we were basically a year ago. So I want to thank all of you at home and here for everything that we faced and may continue to face in the future, but know that we will manage it together. That's the end of my report, Mr. Crowe.
Any questions for Dr. Scarpetti?
Not a question, but, but I would like to comment. As time goes by, I do become more impressed with, with Dr. Scarpetti, because the Settling School System was closed today, because they vaccinated their teachers on Sunday, and we avoided that problem by having vaccinated, vaccinated teachers this Friday. So, just something else.
It's a, if I could be, to have a little sense of humor here, I bumped into someone out of store. It was a parent and a compliment, and again, hearing good things about me. And I said, well, wait until next week. You may hear something negative or something, but, but all joking aside, it's, it's really about the we. I know you've heard me say that constantly. And again, and I include all of you in this, and the team that's here, and our teachers, our peers, custodians, like I said, I went on a long list, but it's true. You have to do it together. So, Mr. Zaiman, I want to thank you for, for acknowledging that, but we do our best with the, the best intentions. Sometimes we're off the mark a little bit, but we quickly recover, and we'll continue to do so.
Else for Dr. Scarpetti? Very good, thank you, doctor. Mr. Gray?
Good evening, everyone. A few updates, beginning with finance. As mentioned earlier in the finance subcommittee meeting, we had our audit conducted back beginning in December. A qualified report was sent to the state at the end of December, because the audit was not completed in time. I'm happy to say that the remaining, remaining portions of the audit have been completed, and we have received the final report, and that has been sent to the state. So our audit is now completed. Grants that we've received, our coronavirus relief funds and our elementary and secondary schools emergency relief funds, which are referred to as ESER funds, have been successfully spent, committed. We are in the process of drawing those monies down from the state of Connecticut. And just recently, we were, received a second entitlement under the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, known as ESER II. The guidelines for the spending of these funds is to address learning loss among students, purchasing educational technology, providing mental health services and supports, school facility repairs and improvements to reduce the risk of the spread of virus, or improve indoor air quality, as well, as well as other activities necessary to maintain the operation and continuity of services in the district. We're in the planning phases of putting together how we will be spending those funds, and that will be shared with you. Immunis update, the Orange Board of Education is now fully live on Immunis Financial System, and that includes the payroll module. We will soon be introducing the employee self-service module, which will allow our employees to update their personal information and access their payroll advices and tax information. As Dr. Scarpetti mentioned earlier, the Orange Board of Education adopted its budget on February 8th, the budget of $22,353,196, which represents an increase of 4.38% over the prior year, was presented to the town of Orange Board of Finance on Monday, March 8th. In food services, we continue to encourage all students and their siblings to take advantage of free school lunches for the remainder of the school year. By taking a free school lunch, you support our district lunch program. Lunches can always be ordered each morning in class, and this month, I am happy to say we're offering a few new choices. They are pizza-like items. The first is called a pizza boli, which is similar to a calzone with sauce, and something called Max Sticks, which are cheese-filled breadsticks with sauce, which are both on this month's menu. And these do meet the nutritional guidelines, by the way. They may not sound like it, but they do. And in facilities, with our HVAC system, during the winter break on February 18th and 19th, we conducted another filter change.
Excuse me, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Gray, are you moving on to your second report?
I am, I'm sorry.
All right.
Any questions for?
Yeah, any questions on the finance report? Very well, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is facilities, and I'll begin with HVAC. During the winter break, we conducted another filter change. All of the filters for our classroom univentilators, our air handlers, our rooftop units, were all removed and replaced, and we're planning to conduct one more filter change this school year during the spring. And last but not least, card reader access points, additional access points are currently being installed at each of our schools to provide further enhanced access to the buildings for our staff and students. And that concludes my report.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Gray? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Russo?
Good evening. I've shared in the past that we've engaged in several iterations of our SRBI process for reading or our scientifically research-based interventions, and I'm glad to share that last Thursday, we engaged in, what am I doing wrong?
Excuse me, Colonel.
Okay. Okay, so last Thursday, we engaged in, well, our first shot at the SRBI process for math, and we're really excited about that work now. And we've also created a timeline, and we do believe that that process will be completed by the end of August for the next school year. As Dr. Scarpetti mentioned, we will be engaging in professional planning and learning sessions on Friday, March 19th, and we have three goals for the day. The first is to address grade level unit anticipated gaps with school grade level teams. We identified those at the end of the full remote learning last year, and we did share those with the curriculum subcommittee. So we're really excited to have that planning time to address those gaps. The second goal is to continue to increase teacher knowledge about our district resources. We plan to give teachers the opportunity to engage in differentiated learning, and I do think that Mr. Zaiman might mention some of those topics, like Freckle, Nuzella, and some others. And the last is to have an opportunity to work on district projects. I'll give you an example of a few. While the math specialists are going to continue the work that we started last Thursday on that SRBI process, the scientific research-based interventions, the reading consultants are really going to review cases of children, how they're responding to certain interventions, if they're not, what are we going to do about that? Our kindergarten classroom aides are going to continue training with our reading consultant, Kelly Michael. Mrs. Edo is going to share some of the specific sessions that our special education staff will engage in, and that's about it. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Questions for Dr. Russo? Susan, go ahead.
One question with regard to, I know there's been a lot of talk in the media about learning loss and that students aren't potentially meeting their objectives that they may have for a given year. And so are we going to be measuring them based on whether it's standardized tests or our own testing, or is that what you're discussing?
So with our, our curricular units, every single unit, all of our teachers, they unpacked learning targets from the standards. So we went through every single learning target for every single unit, and we asked ourselves, you know, did we, how did we do in teaching this target? Were we able to remotely provide adequate instruction for that target? And so we have lots of yes, no. We have assessments, items that tell us how students did. So it's, it's pretty neat that it was last March when this started, as Dr. Scarpetti said, and we've been keeping track of those targets. So we already anticipated, right now, this month, that unit, because it goes vertically. So like the grade two teachers are going to look at the anticipated gaps that last, that the first grade teachers documented, and now they're looking at their units, and they're asking themselves, okay, what do we need to layer in? What are the prerequisites for these targets? And how are we going to address them now? Because right now, moving forward. So I'm just really proud that with our digital platform, we were able to identify those. So we, we know, we have clear targets. Oh, my pleasure.
Very well, thank you. Mary?
For my update, I'd like to share some of our work in the effort to build the capacity for providing in-house services based on our children's needs. Our registered behavior technicians, RBTs, have been using their skills to provide professional growth to all of our paraprofessionals. This training specifically is focused around behavioral supports. On March 19th, our BCBA, our Board Certified Behavior Analyst, will be, be providing professional development to our school psychologists in conducting functional behavior assessments and writing behavior intervention plans. Specialty, special education staff and speech pathologists will be working on district digital resources, as Evelyn mentioned earlier, in addition to specific training related to their professional needs. As part of our yearly refresher training, paraprofessionals on that day will be engaging in training for physical, psychological management training. This training focuses on the psychological aspect of reviewing research-based strategies for helping children regulate their behavior. Throughout the year, our school psychologists and speech and language pathologists have been training on implementing autism diagnostic observation schedules, otherwise known as ADOS. The full training is expected to be completed by April. Many of these training sessions or assessments, the FBA, behavioral intervention plans, the ADOS assessments, have, had been outsourced in the past. Throughout the year, our, so engaging in these training sessions directly correlates to Dr. Scarpetti's proposal for the budget that was shared with the Board of Finance and the Board of Education. Finally, our primary mental health project grant is going strong. We currently have three part-time child associates, who guided by our district social worker, meets with identified children to provide a play-based way for children in grades K through three to personally connect to a caring adult. And I can't say how important that work has been this year, given the challenges that many families are facing at home. That concludes my report.
For Mrs. Edo? Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to board business. Contingency Committee final report. Mr. Zaiman?
Inspired by Mr. Gray, I've tried to move at least into the 20th century and gotten rid of my paper, although it's here. When we first created this committee, we had a series of goals. One was to create a prioritized list that addresses all the improvements that are needed or are expected to be needed regarding the infrastructures of our schools. To do this, we used a study performed by Rose Tissot and Company, architects from Fairfield, done in 2012 and updated in 2016. We started this about three years after the revision, so there were already a lot of changes. These reports ran into the hundreds of pages, offered options for each building, and were quite extensive. The plan was to have our then facilities manager start to go through these studies, first of all, to update the work that had been done, as well as problems that might have now superseded some of these recommendations. I thought it was a good plan, but after a few months, our facilities manager needed to take some time off. Then while we waited for his return, this time off morphed into what eventually became the end of his involvement with the Orange School System. By that time, about a year or more...
All right, we're going to move on to board business. Contingency committee, final report. Mr. Ziman?
Inspired, okay, sorry. Inspired by Mr. Gray, I've tried to move at least into the 20th century and gotten rid of my paper, although it's here. When we first created this committee, we had a series of goals. One was to create a prioritized list that addresses all the improvements that are needed or are expected to be needed regarding the infrastructures of our schools. To do this, we used the study performed by Rose Tissot and Company, Architects from Fairfield, done in 2012 and updated in 2016. We started this about three years after the revision, so there were already a lot of changes. These reports ran into the hundreds of pages, offered options for each building, and were quite extensive. The plan was to have our then facilities manager start to go through these studies. First of all, to update the work that had been done, as well as problems that might have now superseded some of these recommendations. I thought it was a good plan, but after a few months, our facilities manager needed to take some time off. Then while we waited for his return, this time off morphed into what eventually became the end of his involvement with the Orange School System. By that time, about a year or more, we had essentially ceased to function as a committee. In retrospect, I'm afraid I didn't handle this well. And when it became obvious that he wasn't coming back, I should have recalled the committee and proceeded as best we could. I must apologize for handling this so poorly. In the few months before our committee ceased to function, we did look into some of our other goals. We had asked our chief of police to look into the possibility, I'm so excited, sorry, the possibility of turning Marielle Tracy into a one-way street. But the police department determined that this wasn't necessary. Another charge was to make a determination regarding the advisability of building a new school versus the refurbishing of one or more of our existing schools. Needless to say, that can't be determined until we resolve the current state that our buildings are in. I did just get in touch with Pat Rose and got a kind of Cliff Notes version of these Rose Tissot studies, whose recommendations total over $15 million. Whatever we're going to ultimately decide, we have to understand that three of our schools were built in the 60s and Marielle was built in 1910. Susan went there. Education Week.
Wait, not in 1910, though.
I'm gonna, better get out to protect my tires. Education Week said the average age of public school buildings in the U.S. was about 45 years, was about 45 years. That's well in our rearview mirror. We also looked to see if we could make any predictions regarding future school populations. From 2014 to 2019, our average enrollment has been fairly consistent around 1,155 students. The only other information was in 2017, when the Connecticut Mirror found our school population had dropped 207 students from 1,372 in 2007 to 1,165 in 2017. So we didn't really see any dramatic trends on which to note any significant changes. Our last charge was to propose a contingency plan in the event a school or a significant part of a school were to be rendered unusable. We'd looked into the Yale West Campus, High Plains classrooms, and the Holy Infant School Building. Now, this was about a year and a half ago, so I don't know if any of those locations are still available. Beyond that, I think between the proposed bill that Charles pointed out last month regarding air quality and our ability to teach remotely, that problem may have been resolved. All of this information will be forwarded to Building and Grounds, as this will now become part of their long-range plans.
Are there any questions for, go ahead, Susan.
I just want to comment that I don't, I think Mr. Ziman's being a little hard on himself. It wasn't only him. He did a fantastic job of running that team and getting the right people involved, so thank you for your hard work.
I would second that, Mr. Ziman, that there was no failure there. You did a good job under some less than favorable conditions. I'll put it to you that way.
I felt badly when you had to go before the Board of Finance and talk about the $4 million. I thought maybe that could have come up if we had stayed with this.
Mr. Ziman, I'll state again, you did a fine job. Then thank you to the rest of the members of that committee. Especially Charles and probably Personnel. I would say that Mr. Ziman's committee does have some valuable information that you might be able to use in your long-range plans, so I would certainly tap that resource if you so choose. So as far as the board is concerned, the committee has concluded its job and thank you again for your service. All right. Moving on to, oh, and one thing I do want to make a comment on. And this has been a casual, let me call it a casual discussion between myself and a couple of board members through the years. I would like to take a good, hard look at possibly taking the junior high under our umbrella. What the ramifications would be, what that would look like. And so I'd like to talk to Dr. Scarpetti about that, possibly tomorrow, the next day. And then clearly, we'd have to get our attorney involved and clearly, it would end up in a committee someplace, probably Kim's committee, probably Personnel somewhere, or Policy. But I'd like to take a good, a good, hard look at that. Those are our kids, the school is in orange, and I think it's time we took a good, hard look at that. Moving on to standing committees, Finance and Operations, Ms. Riccio.
Thank you. Finance committee met prior to this meeting, as we usually do. We actually met a little bit earlier because we did not have a regular February meeting, so we went over January expenses and February expenses and profit and loss. All of the expenses in PNL are in order. Obviously, there's some areas where we're running a little bit over. There are other areas where we run under. So some over, some under. We're still on track to where we're supposed to be. I did want to note, although Mr. Gray has already mentioned it, is that I encourage families to please take a lunch. It helps the town and if your students would like it, please do so. That will help cafeteria as it is, as it continues to run in the red. Thank you to Mr. Gray that the audit finally is done. No, nothing against Mr. Gray. Of course, it's just the auditors didn't get it done in town. And just a quick update on 21st Century, wanted to go over as well, is that our numbers are down. We're only 30% of capacity. So you may be asking yourself, why am I bringing that up now? Well, we've talked about it in, at the budget workshops. It is because of the pandemic and we know that. However, due to, since there are significantly less students in our 21st Century, obviously revenue is significantly lower. We are operating at a deficit in that program as well, hence the reason why we ended up reducing the number of staff. There's, you know, there's only 20 to 40 children. We don't need five people at each site. So if anybody's interested, just want to let you know that 21st Century continues to support our families. Yes, we are running at a deficit. It does not impact taxpayer dollars at all. We had retained earnings in 21st Century. So unfortunately, we are eating into our retained earnings. So next year, we'll, you know, hopefully be in a better place. So hopefully, those of you who have a need for 21st Century, we have space for you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Riccio? Charles?
I just speak as one of those families who appreciates the hard work of keeping 21st Century going during a very challenging time. So it's a very valuable resource for our family and I think a lot of the others that still rely on it. So thank you.
Else? Okay. The only comment I would make is we definitely need things to turn around and change for 21st Century to survive into next fall. So we'll keep working on it. Susan's on top of it and as is the rest of the board. Personnel, Transportation, Mrs. Brow.
So again, thank you to the committee and thank you to all of you for being willing to read through policies. We continued our work in the late fall after having a pause due to COVID. And even with, you know, us focusing on budget, we were able to go through some policies with care. And we chose them during the budget season to be ones that we thought were lowest hanging fruit. And what we learned, because everyone is so diligent, that they're not always lowest hanging fruit. Just because Cave says that there's a small change to make, doesn't mean that, you know, we don't really look at them carefully and focus on some key issues. So I appreciate the attention that everyone gives to those. The one related to the medical reimbursement is still tabled. The committee will talk about that one. But Dr. Scarpetti has reached out to some experts and that one we may not look at for a long time. But again, we'll talk about it in committee. And we are going to meet at the end of this month. I'll be meeting with Dr. Scarpetti before and we'll start identifying maybe some of the more challenging policies. But maybe those won't end up being easy because, you know, the key to happiness is lowering your expectations. So, thanks.
I like that one. It's a good one. Who do we have? Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Flynn?
Good evening. Typically, we meet on the Monday before our general board meetings, but as you know, the superintendent's presentation of the Board of Finance was at that time last week. So out of respect for his and his team's time, we did not meet last week. We should be meeting very soon and I should have a date for you. Hopefully, our next meeting in our rotation will be at Peck Place School and I hope to have some more information on shortly.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Flynn? Very good. Curriculum, Mr. Ziman, I hope that Dr. Russo didn't steal any of your thunder.
I was going to say, this is, this is going to sound familiar. Some of this is going to sound familiar. You know, there was a time when teaching was accomplished with the teacher standing in the front of the room, lecturing the students who sat listening. That's no longer the case. Teachers no longer work exclusively from a textbook. In Orange, teachers work from a curriculum that they have created and internalized. Teaching is now much more exciting, as of course, is learning. There are now an ever-increasing number of resources available to teachers to enable them to best allow children to maximize their abilities to learn. The last Professional Development Day focused on allowing our teachers to become familiar and more comfortable with using some of these programs. One of the factors that often makes these workshops so much more meaningful than the traditional ones is that so many are taught by our own people. One of these workshops was run by the teacher who has used this particular resource more than any other teacher. For an educator, this is as good as it can ever be. This isn't a company representative or an author. This is a fellow teacher who is explaining how good this program is, what he does with it, how he incorporates it into our curriculum, and why he believes in it. These workshops were so well-received that the district changed plans for the March 19th Professional Development Day. Teachers will now continue with these same resources to allow them to delve deeper and ultimately use these programs with more confidence and understanding. Also on that day, we will be offering all staff the chance to receive the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Dr. Russo reviewed a list of the district utility software, curriculum software, and library automation, along with associated costs. Dr. Russo explained how this software is used by students and/or teachers. Dr. Scarpetti and Russo noted that many of these resources have been acquired because they had been requested by teachers and have been shown to be beneficial. Where possible, the district has been able to get competitive pricing, as well as financially taking advantage of piloting new programs. SRBI, which is Scientific Research-Based Intervention, is a comprehensive and systematic approach to assessing and instructing students. Students. It identifies students who are progressing satisfactorily, but places an emphasis on students whose progress indicates a need for intervention. It provides differentiated, targeted instruction to ameliorate achievement gaps. We have used this successfully with reading and will be instituting this same process for mathematics.
It's for Mr. Ziman? No? No? Thank you, Mr. Ziman. Moving on to ACES, Ms. Riccio?
So ACES met on March 11th. And the good news is that they are now operating in a surplus, which it was the first month that they happened in a surplus. And they're continuing to watch costs and look at managing pandemic costs. And they've had savings in salaries and health insurance costs, a few other things. We also approved eight more budgets for ACES. ACES has probably about, I don't know, 20 different budgets that we have to approve. We look in detail at each of them. With the only three that we haven't finished is the three magnet schools, Wintergreen, Thomas Edison, and Educational Center for the Arts. All are doing well. Thomas Edison will be moving to a new location. You may have seen it in the paper. It's not finalized on the location, but we're very excited about the location. So hopefully by next month, I'll be able to talk freely about it. But it has been in the paper, just to say that. Highlights are, the other piece is that ACES is having their annual gala. It's a virtual gala. If anyone's interested in attending, it's $100 per guest and you get a gift bag and you participate in some games and there's activities and there's music and there's a silent auction and a live auction. If anybody's interested, I have the things that you'd like to order. And I know Dr. Scarpetti and I will be attending. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Susan? Thank you, Ms. Riccio. All right. I will be looking to, looking for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Ken, Susan seconds. Any discussion on an adjournment? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Very well, we are adjourned at 7:50. Thank you.